City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Brithwaite. Alderman Wynn. Alderman Wilson. Alderman Ruth Simmons.
Here.
Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Ravel.
Here.
Alderman Rainey.
Here.
Alderman Fleming. Alderman Fisk. We have a quorum.
All right, thank you, City Clerk. Welcome, everybody, to the Monday, September 9th, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. It's been a while since we've met, so it's nice to see everybody up here at the dais and everybody out there at our first meeting after sort of the summer break. A couple announcements up front. One, a big thank you to the Equity and Empowerment Commission, to our Equity and Empowerment Director for the "Undesign the Red Line" exhibit. A lot of you, if you came in tonight, walked past that exhibit. It is very, very powerful. It is about systematic and intentional racism that has occurred in the history of not only this country, but in our city as well. And Dino Robinson deserves a shout-out here because there's a specific board that goes through the history of redlining here in this city. And I highly recommend folks take the time to go through that. There's going to be lots of different receptions. And we had one two weeks ago that sort of kicked it all off. And it will be here until October 20th, okay? And so if you're watching from home, this is on the second floor of the Civic Center here in Evanston. And it's part of our effort to have a -- to come to terms with our paths and to have a deep and meaningful conversation that leads to action about what we're doing to have a more equitable city. Secondly, this week, we have the Kits, Cats &amp; Kids Rally, and I just want to make folks aware of that. This is a wonderful family event downtown Evanston. They shut off Sherman Street, a block off Sherman Street, from 445 -- actually, it's not at Sherman Street this year because we have a new redesigned and awesome Fountain Square. So it'll be at the Fountain Square, 445 to 7:30 on Thursday this week, and it'll be Evanston Day at the football game on Saturday. Northwestern's provided a bunch of tickets to the city, and I believe they're at the community centers, City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We have 200 tickets to the game, free of charge. We'll put out information tomorrow on their availability.
Okay, but available to residents, free of charge. Excellent. So thank you, Northwestern. Hope to see people at the game. Last, we've got a lot of important topics on the agenda tonight. We're going to start to have a conversation about reparations, which the Equity and Empowerment Commission others have. And we're also going to talk about the beginning of the search for a new city manager. And I have a quick statement because I want everybody to sort of be on the same page about how we're going to proceed in this. Tonight, we will begin the process of selecting a new city manager, arguably the most important responsibility of the Evanston City Council. In the next few weeks, we will acknowledge and celebrate all that Wally Bobkowitz and his team have done to move Evanston forward over the last decade. In the meantime, we will appoint an interim city manager and begin a nationwide search for a new city manager. In conducting this search, we will hire an executive search firm that specializes in hiring city managers and other senior city leaders. Once the search has been -- a search firm has been hired, we will begin a process of seeking community dialogue, obtaining input on what skills, experience, and traits residents would like to see in the next city manager. I envision residents will also have the opportunity to provide feedback on the draft job description before it's posted officially. Lastly, as part of the final interview process, I envision a handful of residents will be asked to serve on a community panel, and that the entire community will have the opportunity to attend a meeting with the final candidates. Ultimately, the hiring of the next city manager resides with the elected body. This body up here, the Evanston City Council, will ultimately hire a professional whose values, skills, experience, and knowledge align with the elected representatives of this city. In the course of hiring the next city manager, the city council will need to decide whether the hiring and firing of a city manager should be made by a majority of the council or a supermajority, including the mayor, as is defined by our rules and past practices. There's a conflict right now between our city code and our rules. We will take this up for conversation at the next Rules Committee meeting on Monday, October 7th. Tonight, a discussion will focus on selecting an interim city manager and beginning the executive search process. That concludes my opening remarks. I guess I have one more, which is, and you think that I, of all people, would announce this, on September 19 -- excuse me, on September 2019 is National Emergency Preparedness Month. Yes, I've spent 25 years of my life working around this country, trying to help communities prepare for and respond from disasters. And the statistics are bad when it comes to preparedness. In one academic study I saw, it was about 13% of the people, they claimed, were prepared for some sort of disaster. So there'll be lots of activities going on in that regard this month, and I don't know if there was any -- if Chief -- all right, we've got Chief Cull going to come up and talk to us about National Emergency Preparedness Month, so welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, City Clerk Devon Reed, and City Manager Wally Bobkowitz. Good evening. I am Kimberly Cool, Division Chief of Emergency Management with Evanston Fire Department. I'm here to speak today about emergency preparedness, and as you mentioned, it's National Preparedness Month. This national initiative provides yet another opportunity to encourage members of our community to become better prepared for disasters and everyday emergencies within our homes, our businesses, and our communities. The 2019 theme is Prepared, Not Scared. Over a period of four weeks, online topics for discussion include the importance of establishing a financial savings in preparation of a potential disaster, which remarkably opposes one of the greatest challenges in terms of national preparedness; planning and preparation for both adults and teenagers to include the making of disaster preparedness kits; and the need for building community preparedness, which essentially reinforces the need and really the relevance of establishing those interagency cooperation and partnerships. Through a community outreach program here in Evanston, I plan to orchestrate community engagement in conjunction with Audrey Thompson, our local embudsman, and Deputy Chief Dugan with the Evanston Police Department, to include discussions and present several opportunities related to establishing an improved mass communications through our Everbridge network, as well as WIA, which is a wireless emergency activation, which we can provide for anybody in our area; establishing interagency cooperations and partnerships relative to providing a more proactive approach to disaster management. Really, they've proven that bolstering those pre-established relationships significantly improves the ability to respond to a disaster. The File of Life Program is yet another opportunity for us to reach the community in terms of being able to provide medical emergency information, listing your pertinent medical conditions, medicines, and anything relevant with regards to providing emergency medical care, and it's proven to save lives. That's something that somebody fills out and keeps in their own home and puts right on their fridge. And additionally, the Community Emergency Response Team, which is called CERT, it's a wonderful program, to name a few, that are offered within the city of Evanston. And those are some of the many discussions that will be provided through members in our community. This in part will be achieved through a community outreach program, which I look to initiate over the next few months with the help of our local city officials, including the Aldermen. I'll be reaching out to every one of you to hopefully be able to understand more of the needs of your community and be able to do outreach opportunities to speak with them. This initiative is designed to achieve two core objectives. One, to gain a greater perspective of the current needs within our communities so that in the event of a disaster, we're better prepared providing for their needs. And second, to provide information and opportunities available for those within our community to address their needs through programs offered through our local fire, police department, health and human services, and parks departments. Much of this information can also be accessed online through several sites, one of which is ruddy.gov. There's also fema.gov. We also have an online monthly newsletter called Roll Call for the Fire Department, and also our city webpage under the Fire Department Emergency Management link. I very much look forward to interacting with all members within our community to help build upon the resilient and forward-thinking approach, which I believe is inherent within our Evanston culture. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to you and all your colleagues and our police emergency responders. As I mentioned at the beginning, today is September 9th. The 18-year anniversary of September 11th is coming up this Wednesday. And we will have a memorial at the Fireman's Park, starting at 7:30 a.m. on Wednesday, September 11th, for anyone that's interested in coming out and supporting our first responders and remembering what happened on that terrible day. A city manager, do you have any public announcements?
I do not.
A city clerk?
Yes, briefly, I just want to acknowledge the receipt of a number of letters from members of the community, and this will become a part of the packet in the city's record. All of the letters that I've received are supporting SP3, and these will be distributed to the Aldermen in the council minutes for the next meeting. Also, we received a number of emails or communications relating to concerns from members in the community relating to 5G wireless installations, the rollout coming to our city, and health concerns, and all of those emails will be in the council minutes and available for the city council members.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Clerk Reed. Okay, we're going to go now to public comment. Just for folks that are new to public comment, the city council rules set aside 45 minutes for public comment. We take the total number of people that have signed up for public comment divided by 45 minutes. We have about 35 people, so quite a bit, that have signed up tonight. So I'm going to set the time at a minute 15 seconds for each person for public comment. When you get to a minute, I'm going to just let you know that there are 15 seconds left. Clerk Reed's going to help me with the time up here. Because I know there's a lot of people here, I also want to let you know that when we get to the special orders of business, once we finish public comment, we're going to move SP3, which is the discussion of reparations, up to the beginning, okay? Because I know a lot of people are here for that as well. So we'll move that up, and then we'll move into the other items on the special order business. All right, I'll call them off by threes, and if you can come up and get ready, we'll get through this in 45 minutes. And I'm going to ask the city manager to keep track of the overall time. Our rules say that we'll go ahead and start city council as soon as the 45 minutes are up, so I ask everyone to please be respectful of the allotted time for each person. Daniel Joseph is first, then Carolyn Murray, then Gabriella Johansson. And I apologize ahead of time if I'm mispronouncing anyone's name. So welcome. Is Daniel here? Okay, maybe, all right. Carolyn, come on up. Welcome.
So I'm going to make comments on SP3, and I'm going to start off by saying that I am very offended that this racial -- racially motivated subject is even coming up this way, because for the first time in all of my life, I have been privy to committees and groups discussing their issues across the board, white, black, no respect to race, gender, have these issues have ever brought us together in this town like they have now. And I am so happy that through all of these groups, the main issue and the main cause of us coming together as a people, as a community, has been transparency and accountability on so many different levels with this council and how you have treated these residents. So I will now say also, I don't appreciate, as a black veteran who was deployed during 9/11, who divorced her husband, moved back here, could have moved anywhere in the world, I came back here with my children. And I spoke about this the first time I came back here, when there was no recreation things for my kids to do.
Carolyn, we have 15 seconds.
Okay. General assistance was in a surplus. Most of the funds were going to white males. That came from Marty Lyons. Connection for the homeless, most of these programs that I benefited from were -- this was campaign issues. I benefited from those programs, not as an African American, but as a citizen. So now these issues are back on this referendum as if it is something that Evanston didn't have. Most of these things were already in existence. And what really kills me is that as far as vocational training, our Alderman received most of the money for the vocational training, so we're the successful entrepreneurs that came out of that. She got all the salary from it. So how in the heck can you tell me that this is really for African Americans? No, this is a distraction to keep this community divided.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next, we've got Gabriella Johansson, then Linda Del Bosque. Welcome.
Hello. I'm speaking in support of SP3 recommendation from the Equity and Empowerment Commission for reparations. This policy should be seen as a first step and open the door for other groups as well. I recognize that we sit on the land of the Council of the Three Fires, who are doing their own reparations. The Movement for Black Lives called for reparations to all African-descended people in the United States because of the ways in which slavery in the U.S. marked all black people. This includes racial terror, state sanctions, segregation, and theft and destruction of black people's land, property, businesses, homes, housing discrimination and redlining, and the ongoing effects of racial segregation, discrimination, and structural exclusion, which represent ongoing impacts and harms of slavery that have not yet ceased or been remedied. We cannot wait for all Evanstonians to understand why this is necessary and want to take action with us. I claim that that white ignorance is violence. It is willfully upholding white supremacy to accept the status quo and not ask ourselves in our community why the wealth gap, education gap, criminal justice disparities, and countless other structural injustices exist, and what can be done to rectify the situation. We are upholding white supremacy unless we are actively working to rectify the years of historical and precedent violence facilitated and condoned by our institutions. This policy would show the council's commitment to Resolution 58R19, a resolution commitment to end structural racism and achieve racial equality, passed in June. All non-black Evanstonians profit and privilege in some way from the oppression of our black community members, and we have a responsibility to commit ourselves to equity and willfully give up these privileges. As we discussed -- yeah, got you. In the last EE meeting, when policy is passed, people will take notice. When action is taken, people will have hope and will join in the reconciliation process. Institutions and communities will feel pressure from the city to take action and join the next steps. To uplift us all, we must act in solidarity and swiftly prioritize reparations for the black community. Thank you.
Thank you, Gabriella. Linda, come on up, Linda Del Bosque, then Harris Miller, then Christopher Aaron, your last name got a little cut off on my sheet. Creeding or Creed? Welcome.
Good evening, council. Linda Del Bosque, I'm just, first and foremost, I'm for the reparations. This is exactly what's needed, but to divide, Wally, to divide our community, knowing that this is not the way to go about it. You are very smart. You're talented and you're skilled. Why are we wasting our time in dividing our community? We have this great display here on the second level. Are we going to continue that? Wally, you're about to head out, but these community members, including myself, are staying here and we're living here, and we're going to raise our family here. I'd appreciate it if y'all had experts that came together before you presented this to our community. We're very busy, and we expect y'all, and that's why we elect each and every one of you, to do right by us. Now, as we go into this fourth quarter, I'm expecting a lot more from each and one of you. Robin, vocational, I'm a businessperson. I haven't seen one successful businessperson come out of your entrepreneurship program. It is time that we start working harder for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, all right. I think that's a great suggestion, Alderman Rainey. Harris, come on up, Harris Miller, and then we've got Christopher Aaron, then Rachel Muir.
Good evening. Harris Miller, Fourth Ward. I understand the armed guards will be Evanston residents or retired police officers. However, the Civic Center is a public place. We should hire EPD's off-duty police officers for security despite expenses. Please oppose proposal 1947. I'm concerned the RFP will lead to privatization in selling of public spaces. For example, the recycling center on Oakton was sold to a developer. If we deed her privatization, residents will maintain their community connections through these public meeting spaces and parks. This is clearly Wally's parting gift that will destroy our city. No changes can be made until we have a new city manager. Finally, the community needs a stake in the city manager hiring process. We should have town halls in order to do this, then have the opportunity to meet the candidates and to ask questions. Also, we need to work with Patricia Efrin from the Equity and Empowerment Committee so that we could put together SP3, SP4 in reference to SP1 and 2.
10 seconds, Harris.
To start the city manager process now. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, Christopher Aaron. Now you hear Christopher Aaron, again Creed, it looks like, K-R-E-A-D. Then the last name got cut off. I couldn't see the rest of it. Okay, Rachel Muir, Heidi Parsons, and then Mike Vasilko. So welcome, Rachel.
Hi, I'm here to speak in support of the movement towards reparations and to call on the city staff to prioritize this action in the best spirits of the black community of Evanston. We know that white supremacy is concretely and currently affecting black people, their communities, and their families. We see this undubitably through the existence of redlining, wage shift, wealth disparities, and the crib-de-prison pipeline that we see all the time within Evanston itself. The same white supremacy that was born out of chattel slavery and colonialism keeps these systems alive and creates wealth and opportunity for non-black populations. It is the reason why white families hold nearly all the wealth of the United States, why white people have no family in prison most of the time, and why we're having this conversation here today. This is visible within the Evanston community, as I have said, and that's why it should be an urgent matter to the city. It is the most moral and just choice to commit to providing resources and reparations for the black community of Evanston. Thank you.
Thank you, Rachel. Heidi, we have Heidi Parsons. Is Heidi here? Okay, after Heidi, if Heidi's not here, we've got Mike Vasilko, then Kristin DiOrio. Okay, welcome, Mike.
Thank you. Mike Vasilko, 2728 Rees. The council needs to take the Robert Crown artificial turf issue seriously. Evanston has a director of Parks and Recreation and a chief engineer who choose a small project donation, money, over the health risk to our children. They call the facts presented in the manufacturer's own published literature anecdotal. Manufacturer's own material safety data sheets report EPDM is classified as an eye irritant because it contains calcium oxide. The same reports classify EPDM as a skin irritant because it contains calcium oxide. The manufacturer's own data reports refer to EPDM as a Class 2B carcinogen known to cause cancer in animals. Further, many municipalities across the U.S. have banned the use of rubber products such as EPDM and ground rubber in artificial turf installations. Manufacturer's reports are not anecdotal or ambiguous, they are fact.
Mike, you have 15 more seconds.
Okay. There are other safe, organic choices for turf. I'll show you those after I sit down. I'll bring these around to you. I'm going to ask you to acknowledge the health risks EPDM poses to our children by signing an affidavit that I give you to accept personal liability for potential health hazards to our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. All right, Kirsten DiOrio. All right, Kirsten, I hope you're not coming up because I'm mispronouncing your last name if you're out there. It's D apostrophe A-U-R-E-L-I-O. Okay, Tony Ray, then James Engelmann. Okay, how about James? Come on up, James. All right, welcome. Nice to see you.
Hello. My name's James Engelmann from the Fifth Ward, 24 Brown. I'd like to, you guys, to support SP3 and XP4, because I've been to some of these meetings, and it was very interesting, and with all these other people, it was very -- and another thing is, a couple of weeks ago, I don't know why, but I was doing something else, and one of my neighbors came up to me and asked me, "Why is the water turned off?" And a couple hours later, it went back on. And can you let -- or people know that -- that people know 24 hours prior to what they're going to do so they could prepare, because I found out that two people were trying to take a shower, and there was no water. Thank you.
Thank you, James, for that suggestion. Water, okay. Lori Keenan, Madeline Decree, then Nina Caveen.
Hi, my name is Lori Keenan, and I'm speaking today in strong opposition to the idea and expense of having armed guards at the Civic Center, who are paid by an independent firm, Phoenix Security. Regardless of the cost, the idea is abhorrent, and I would ask a few questions. Who deemed this necessary and for what reasons? Do other communities our size have a similar armed presence? Our community doesn't want or need this presence, as we've seen time and again, that private armed security personnel are not a deterrent for violence. If there were an incident, what would happen? The two options that seem likely are that the guard would have to, A, call the police, or B, shoot someone, because they wouldn't have the authority to arrest anyone if there were a need. With Evanston Police Department already having budget and hour cuts, if this is truly necessary, wouldn't it make more sense to have the $113,000 to have our guys, who are trained in handling this service? If there is a concern, then I would want to know what it is and why it's being proposed. Secondly, I'm opposed to having a paid consultant do an assessment of the properties and building uses within the city for $150,000 in costs. The city, the Civic Center has been said to need $12,000 to $20,000 in repairs, or $20,000 in repairs, but if that number--
Lori, I need you around 10 seconds.
That's about what they said for Robert Crown, and that's ending up costing us $90 million. On the topic of reparations, I would say it's a great idea, and let's start by giving the city clerk his powers back. Thank you.
Thank you. Madeline Decree, Nina Caveen, then Renitrice Pierre. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone at home. I'm Madeline Decree. I am happy to see some, or maybe I'm happy to see a reparation bill is on the Evanston City Council table to explore. I would like to add and recommend that this little town of Evanston pay the full cost of foster school, family focus. Let it be a donation, since the black people didn't get their education the way they were supposed to. Give it up. It seemed that we would benefit from this, since the schools cannot teach our children to go to Howard, many of them, Harvard. So why not give them a good education here, long last? The United Nations experts say the United States owed the reparation to the African-Americans. This recommendation, based on a report by the United Nations Working Group Experts on the People of African Descent, which was presented to the United Nations High Commissioner of Human Rights--
Madeline Decree, we have 15 seconds.
This report came from the Washington Post, in particular, the legacy of the colonial history, the enslavement, the racial terrorism that went on in this country by these evil people. One more thing, abortion. I would like the city health department to find out, do some research on abortion that black women are doing. They say that black women are getting more abortion than the white women. We need a Planned Parenthood here in Evanston and in the United States. The black women body is being destroyed by all-- The black women body is being destroyed by all of these abortions. I believe in the woman's rights, but I believe in a plan, a planned way to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Decree, thank you. Nina Caven.
I'm sorry, I wanted to say this. We need to have a link on all meetings here in Evanston. And Mr. Mayor, I don't appreciate you leaving the town, going on a vacation, without letting the constituents of Evanston know about your investigation with this council.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Decree. Okay, Nina Caven, Renatrice Pierre, and then Mary Ann Kearns, welcome.
Thank you. This is the first time I've ever done this, spoken in front of city council, and I'm speaking in support of SP3 and 4. Where reparations are concerned, it is way past time for this country, and more realistically, this city, to literally put its money where its mouth is. We, white people, can tout our diversity till the cows come home, even as our black residents and white residents live mostly in separate neighborhoods and wards, and though they go to the same schools, have drastically different outcomes. We can read books and join racial justice discussion groups and administer Facebook pages and groups about race and racism and comment on them from dawn till midnight. We can invite famous authors and thinkers to ETHS who inspire us for an hour to be better and think harder and read even more. We can bring outstanding exhibits like Undesigning the Red Line to educate folks about housing discrimination and restrictive covenants. We can even take two buses of 100 Evanston residents to the Legacy Museum of from enslavement to mass incarceration and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice. But absolutely none of it means a thing if we don't do something truly meaningful and effective to make economic amends for the brutality of slavery and the way it has evolved through today, right here in Evanston. And that something is to make reparations to address the wealth and opportunity gaps of Evanston's black community as a result of all the physical and mental harm and economic injustices they have endured in the city. When our group does go to Montgomery on Saturday, we'll have the incredible opportunity to bear witness to this country's brutal racial history, and we will be able to see and touch a jar of soil taken from the spot in Abbeville, South Carolina, where a black man named Anthony Crawford was brutally lynched in 1916 for arguing with a white store owner about the price of cottonseed. It was that lynching that resulted in enormous numbers of Abbeville residents fleeing north and settling in Evanston among other northern cities. And it was Anthony Crawford's great-granddaughter, great-great-granddaughter, Doria Johnson, who was born and raised here, who worked tirelessly to draw attention to Crawford's violent death and its connection to Evanston. Our bus ride will take 16 hours.
Nina, we're way over the time.
I fully support this Equity and Empowerment Commission's recommendation that the council act on reparations. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Just as a note, if you have statements that are written, you can send it to city clerk at City of Evanston, and it'll be included in its entirety in the record.
Salutations to everyone, council members and mayor. I have a full report here from an incident that occurred the last day of the festival downtown. I also tagged everyone on my Instagram. I did take it down, but I tagged everybody to alert you all of what had happened. There's blatant racism, white supremacy occurring in Evanston. It is not history, because there were many middle school kids, and I'm a substitute teacher in this district, and I recognize them. They were on a corner of, what is that, Church and Sherman, in front of Barnes and Nobles, when some private citizens, two of which work for the district, District 65, and the company you all hired to either erect or take down the staging for the festival, decided to verbally attack middle school students and also put their hands on these students in front of Evanston Police Department. Again, it's in a report that I've made out to the best of my ability. The alderman does know, one or two of them does know how to get in contact with me. I would like a full report within, can we say, 28 days? I think that is plausible and applicable. And I also have one other thing to say, ma'am, you were saying something about the entrepreneurial program that Alderman Simmons has. You should start asking more questions, because I'm a successful graduate and entrepreneur of that program. And just because I don't have a store on Main Street or Sherman Avenue doesn't mean it didn't work. So I suspect you're practicing racism by accusing her of wasting her money and not finding out the details before you open your mouth. Thank you very much.
Can I, I was going to ask for a copy of the report.
Have you talked to the chief? Did you talk to the chief while he's here? Okay, I think that would be good, to talk to the chief while he's here.
Can I have a question? I'm sorry, Clerk Reed, can you make a copy? I don't want to wait for the...
Can she make a copy?
Oh, perfect, okay, thank you.
Mary Ann, welcome, welcome.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Kearns, I'm a resident of the 8th Ward, and I'm a staff member of Impact Behavioral Health Partners, who rents space from the Civic Center. We're on the ground floor, and we serve a population of adults with chronic mental illness, including to supply housing and clinical support and employment services. And we are very concerned about hiring Phoenix Security to patrol the halls. We're not sure with a private security company what kind of training they would have in de-escalation and dealing with persons with mental illness. We do know the Evanston Police Department does have training in this area, because we've done some of it. We would be much more comfortable with having Evanston Police if members of the council feel that that's necessary for the Civic Center. But we are very concerned about hiring a private security firm that does not generally do that kind of training, and that kind of training is not listed in the description of the contract. And so we hope that you would take that into consideration before a contract such as this is approved.
Thank you, Mary Ann. We got Paula Twilling, Jackson Poller, and then Doreen Price. Is Paula here?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then after Doreen Price, we'll have Tina Payden, then Ally Harned.
Paula Twilling, 2664 Sheridan Road. My comment tonight references passage of Ordinance 64019, approved on July 8th, which granted a major variation for a curb cut in driveway to the street at 2650 Sheridan Road. Our zoning ordinances, the ZBA and the council, should be consistent and fair for all those affected by its laws, rulings, and votes. I don't believe that that was the case with your vote on the ordinance. My husband and I had appeared at the ZBA in the past with a build precedent argument, which they denied. Yet, during discussion of 64019 on July 8th, one alderman cited the existence of the driveway for the previous owners, an example of build precedent, so he would be supporting the developer's appeal. I'm going to skip a lot of it, because I know I don't have time. In conclusion, I am not actually against a driveway facing the street frontage when there is alley access. After all, we wanted one. My visit to the ZBA was to argue for consistency in following our ordinances. If any homeowner can demonstrate that a driver can exit facing forward toward the street rather than backing out, as the 2650 developer apparently did, then everyone should have that option. I think that this section of the R1 ordinance should be repealed. The decision process is flawed, and the outcomes are inconsistent across decisions. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paula. Okay, Jackson Poller's next, then Doreen Price, then Tina Payden.
Jackson Poller, First Ward. Briefly about A18, the Armed Security Guard Contract. From what I briefly called of administration in public works, it sounded like there was some information that even the aldermen don't have yet, and I can understand the need for some initial discussions on, like, potential security threats to be kept private, but you can still respect the seriousness of a situation while still keeping the public in the loop on your rereasoning and your decision-making, and I think the public deserves that, so please keep that in mind. Secondly, briefly on SP1, the search for a new city manager, I'm glad that the mayor briefly spoke to this effect, but I would like to reiterate, the city manager is an unelected position that wields a massive amount of public-facing power without a whole lot of public accountability once hired. And I hope that you all understand and keep that fact in mind, and the public should take a leading role in conducting this search. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackson. Doreen? All right, Doreen Price, Tina Payden, then Ally Harned, then Carla Thomas.
That was a good segue between Jackson and Harrison and others. The biggest concern is that we keep moving forward, and no matter what you think of making an attempt to do something the right way, we're going to be covering issues, as was explained, that we share in common. And looking at the worst of the worst issues is probably the best way to get people to get started. So I'm very much in support of SP3 and 4. In that context, to continue moving forward, there are great strides made, in fact, new ways of getting people to work together. We had different opinions about things, or we were unaware of some of the history that actually made something so much more important to us in our partnerships. From that, we developed close friendships. We rarely see that happen within the city. I would suggest that, with regard to the exploration for the new city manager, that we continue in that vein, with all the expertise that's been done, with all the view of reparations in mind, where people who were excluded now can lead the way. We should take Pat Effion and her group, and her intention, and her process, and the people involved. Fifth Ward and everyone else, they included, they excluded no one. And that process should be the beginning of our search for the city manager and what search firms we should use, because I know for a fact, being in science, and when they were looking for CEOs, they weren't the best CEOs, because you used a different search firm than what is good for the purpose of this person's position. And to move this forward, this person has to be able to move this, this is something commitment from the city council. If they can't move this forward, then this would not look well on your initial intention.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And I know many of you do support this initiative.
Thank you. Tina Payden, Ally Harned, Carla Thomas.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tina Payden. I'm here to support SP3 and 4. I would like to thank Alderman Rue Simmons for having a series of meetings on very important issue of equity and empowerment. It's very important that we continue to have these kind of meetings, because there was a lot of people in these meetings that were unaware of racism, and that it's not just a slavery issue. This happens every day in everybody's life. And she, I'm here to support that this is not just a one-time agenda item, like affordable housing is very frequently. You talk about it one time and it disappears. You need to support this right away. And also, speaking of discriminatory, anybody that doesn't know about the real ID, you need to get your real ID, and it is a very discriminatory process as well. And I got my real ID, and it took two and a half hours, three times.
Thank you, Tina. Ally Harned, Carla Thomas, then Bennett Johnson.
Good evening, honorable everyone. I am Ally Harned from the 2nd Ward. Regarding SP1, I hope that the city will endeavor to have a thorough and inclusive process for the new city manager of Evanston. On page 18 of the packet, the question is asked if the recruiter should host community meetings to get input on qualities desired. I appreciate what Mayor Hagerty said in his remarks, because based on my experience with activists and passionate community members, I believe the answer is yes. Regarding SP3, I believe strongly that the case for reparations has been powerfully made by the community at community meetings and by speakers tonight. I just want to share some anecdotal information, which I've talked to a number of people about already. I just started my 15th year as a school social worker in District 65, and during that time I've worked, that I've worked here, I've worked with countless families who have experienced financial hardships, the most challenging of which is housing insecurity. We, as a school district, work really hard to support striving students with academic and behavioral supports, and may do multi-year support plans for individual students. What I found is that an increasing trend is that for many families, though their students improve in academic success, the family can no longer afford to live in Evanston. I'm talking fast. So the family has to move away, and the students have to start over again in their new school. Unfortunately, the majority of these families I'm referring to are black and brown, and many black families were generations deep in Evanston, but they were forced to leave Evanston behind and start over in a community that welcomes and sustains them. It seemed like there were more programs in place when it first started in the district, and so I hope that some of these programs will be brought back as part of the reparations process. Finally, a quick update on the Evanston Voter Initiative, which is working to elevate the people's voice with ballot choice. We are over halfway to our signature goal, and we welcome anyone watching to join us at www.evanstonvoterinitiative.org and on Facebook.
Thank you, Ally.
And if a referendum is needed to pass the reparations idea, Evanston Voter Initiative is ready to help out.
Thank you. All right. Carla Thomas, Bennett Johnson, and Elliot Zashin.
Hi, I'm speaking not only to the council today, but to all Evanston citizens. The diversity that Evanston white families crave, tout, and consider themselves superior to the rest of the elite North Shore four living adjacent to is not because of people of color in Evanston, but on the backs of people of color in Evanston. Not in the past, but still today. So there's no question in my mind that Evanston needs to adopt a reparation policy that we commit to grow and improve over decades to come. As a community and as a nation, our budget is a reflection of our values. I'll say that again, our budget is a reflection of our values. So when we hear the seemingly practical pushback of, "Well, where would the money come from?", I find myself quite irritated. The money is going to come from getting rid of some of the nice-to-haves that we've all grown so accustomed to in our fancy North Shore town. My kids are just as fond of that water fountain as every other kid who frolics through it. But if I were given a vote to spend $7 million on a new fountain and colorful chairs, or spend money on affordable housing for black and brown families that are being priced out of Evanston every day, I would run to the backyard in a heartbeat and explain to my kids that the hose and the sprinkler was just going to have to cut it for water play, and they should count their blessings.
Carla, you have 15 seconds.
In the 1980s, when enslaved Africans were a financial asset worth more than American manufacturing, all railroads and all production capacity in America, and we suggested that slavery be abolished, that too seemed impossible. But it was ethically and morally essential, as is reparations today. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Johnson, we got Bennett Johnson, then Elliot Zashin, then Natsutsa Mabwa.
Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, city manager, city council. We have what we call the republican form of government. In other words, you all represent the people. You have problems our course, collegiality, sometimes you listen more to the person next to you rather than constituents. But if, and also, this personal compower, it sort of kind of gets to you every now and then. I know this because I've been involved in politics for decades. The thing that we have to understand, though, is that something like Robert Crown Center, where it generates $54 million, most of the Evanston funds are going to two large entities, Ozinga and Evanston Lumber Company. And yet still, we have minority contractors and people who need jobs that aren't getting, are not getting it, and that's a fact, not a guess. So it means that what should be coming into this community is to help everybody, because if you hire any Evanstonian, that, most, the majority of them, stays in the community. The other thing is that, and of course, the main thing is that the people who live and pay the property taxes that are created from the Robert Crown thing.
Bennett, you got 15 seconds.
That's all I need. I do want to say two things. We had a reparations convention at Northwestern in the year 2000. Out of that came a real clear definition of reparation. But I do want to say finally that I think I shall never see a pine as lovely as a tree. But trees don't vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Bennett. All right, Elliot Zashin, Natsutsa Mabwa, and then Valerie Keenan.
Elliot Zashin, 9th Ward, good evening. I urge the mayor and the council to maximize citizen participation in the selection of the next city managers. You made a start on this with the police chief's selection, but you could have done more. People who attended the public meeting asked for a second session, but never got it. Residents and staff should be part of the interviewing team, and these persons should not be anonymous. The mayor spoke of publicizing the position description and of a community panel. These are good ideas, I like to see them implemented. Restoring the city to a sound financial position and calming the internal conflicts which seem to preoccupy our elected officials and the city staff will be a daunting challenge for the next manager. Citizens need to have some sense of how the new manager will tackle these problems, and how much information about the city's condition she or he will share with the public. A great deal of public confidence has been lost. Allowing us to have a significant role in the selection of the next city manager will be a first step. be a first step towards restoring that confidence. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. All right, Nasutza, then Valerie Cahan, then Tricia Conley.
Good evening, city council members and Mayor Hagerty. I'm here on behalf of the Evanston Chamber of Commerce as a board member and Evanston resident and business owner. I'm here to discuss and make some comments about A24, ordinance 890-19 for introduction, amending the municipal retailer's occupation tax to increase the rate from 1% to 1.25%. The chamber surveyed 71 businesses recently to get some feedback, so you could hear what businesses think about this proposal. Question one, were you aware that Evanston City Council is considering the adoption of the ordinance? 73.33% said no, they weren't aware. Are you in favor of the sales tax increase? 72.38% said no. Only 10.48% said yes. Question number three, do you think this tax increase will impact your business? 51.46% said would hurt business. 33.98, no impact. 14.56% said not sure. That indicates probably more information is needed for people to make informed decisions as business owners. Just a few comments that the surveyed businesses left. This tax increase would stifle a lot of retail businesses and businesses looking to expand into large spaces. The current 10% sales tax already causes sticker shock for our customers. We cannot afford any more taxes or business expenses. We already get questions about high sales tax for many out-of-town guests. A necessary burden on retailers and restaurants who have to work exceptionally hard to compete with Chicago and Old Orchard.
Nasutza, I need you to wrap it up.
Okay, one more. Sales tax increases hurt retail businesses in our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
All right, Valerie, Tricia Conley, Darlene Cannon.
Hi, my name is Valerie Khan. I grew up here, and I'm currently raising my family here. In addition to being a Realtor and a photographer, I'm on the STEM School Committee, working to bring a D65 community STEM school to the Fifth Ward. Approving this feasibility study, so I'm in support of SP three and SP four, approving this feasibility study for a suite of ovarian reparations is an important step and a fundamental to the work many are doing to close the wealth and opportunity gap, to bring sustainable equity and positive long-term economic impact to Evanstonians, black and brown residents. Reparations are needed. They are overdue. They are needed for housing assistance, other relief initiatives, economic development, programs for young and old, and reparation grants are needed for African-American current and future business owners and entrepreneurs, along with bringing a school to the Fifth Ward, to discontinue the busing of black and brown children, to create the illusion of diversity for wealthy North Evanstonians. This is only the beginning. I believe that the council has an opportunity tonight to take a very important first step to eventually bringing long-term equitable impact to all of its current and future African-American community members. As someone who grew up here, I can tell you that I have long benefited from the diversity in Evanston, and it has been on the backs of black and brown residents of this community, as Carla said. And the time is up. It is time, it is payback time, and we are more than decades past the due date.
Thank you, Valerie. Tricia Conley, Darlene Cannon, and then Kamone Hendricks.
Thank you. My name is Tricia Conley. I live in the Fourth Ward. Just to acknowledge SP three, which I support, and I'm glad to see we're moving on that. I'm here to talk more specifically about A20 in connection to Robert Crown. So this talk about selling city assets, we're doing a review of what the value is of our city assets is concerning, and specifically in parallel to Robert Crown. I'd like to ask the following. First of all, why was Robert Crown not on the list of choices during the last budget that we could weigh in on in order to decide if it's something we wanted to cut? Also, please share with the public how Robert Crown fits in the lens of equity when the ICE time will mostly be dedicated for private use. It is amazing, when you look at a schedule and put that together, what it looks like. It's not good, folks.
Tricia, you have 15 seconds.
Rather than selling, got it. Rather than selling off our assets, how about we take a look at selling two ice rinks that are primarily going to be used for private use? We can get it done, folks. Thank you.
Thank you. Darlene Cannon, Kamone Hendricks, then Venice Hendricks.
Good evening. SP three, I'm glad also to see that reparations is being presented before the council sign by the Equity and Empowerment Commission. SP one, the search for the Evanston's next city manager, it is imperative that the tax-paying citizens are on the interviewing committee and involved in the hiring process to ensure that our next city manager has the best interests of all of Evanston, not just the 1%. I think by now, we all, we are all aware of the incredibly enormous cost of the new Robert Crown Center. City manager Wally Bakowitz confirmed that this is, in fact, the most expensive project in Evanston's history. Most of the money allocated to this project is to cover the cost of the two NHL ice rinks. Since Mr. Bakowitz and others have stated that the city of Evanston will look at all projects through an equity lens, we ask that you do not skip over this project when doing so. We thank Dr. Pat Effion for meeting with us, and who has agreed to secure and release to us the demographics surrounding ice hockey in Evanston. If we are going to look at projects, projects and taxpayer expenses through an equity lens, then we must face reality and look at how this city has chosen to spend tens of millions of dollars, and for whom.
Thank you, Darlene. Kamone Hendricks, then Venice Hendricks, then Brittany Tapora.
Hello, everyone, mayor, city council, city manager. My name is Kamone Hendricks. I am the owner of an organization called Evanston Present and Future. I consider myself a community leader as well. I'm here in support of SP three and SP four. And I would just like to read, as I always like to read, the definition of reparations. It is a making amends for wrongdoing to a group of people. And I'm just really asking that everyone, you know, really think about what that means and do the right thing. The Equity and Empowerment Commission has held several community meetings with several community members, business owners, lawyers, doctors, and we all got together and brainstormed and came to the conclusion with these topics that are at hand today. The community believed that reparations are beyond overdue for the black community, and the recommendation of wealth and opportunity gaps and housing gaps came from the community members.
Kamone, you got 15 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And, sorry. So the fact of finding where the money comes from is, you know, should not even be a question. This is a moral commitment, and the money is there, and all it should be is a matter of finding it and doing the right thing, and making amends, and moving forward, and uniting the community as it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming out. All right. Venice Hendricks. And if I'm mispronouncing your name, please get up here and pronounce your name.
My name is Vaneece Hendricks.
Vaneece, thank you, Vaneece. And then we've got Brittany, and then Sue Lalabac.
All right. Good evening. I am here in support of SP three and SP four. I'm here to support it, because I feel like the time for talking is done. It's time for action. And everything that's laid out that I support the most is all the provisions for entrepreneurs and repurposing the Gibbs Morrison Center. As a photographer and entrepreneur myself, I struggle daily trying to find places for photo shoots and just to do, you know, daily business. And the low-interest loans are especially needed. So I wanted to come here tonight to say that I support this 100%, and I would like to see some action. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. We've got Brittany, Sue Lalabac, and then Tara Foster Lloyd. Welcome.
Hi, I'm Brittany Tapora from the Fifth Ward, and I'm here just in support of SP three and four. I just wanted to make the point that reparations are not something that anyone is going to be giving to the black community of Evanston. It's something that's owed. It's something that they've already, they've already endured all of the hardships, and it's time that we give back what we've taken from the black and brown community here in Evanston. Someone explained it like this, and it made perfect sense to me. Imagine that someone gifted you a vehicle. With that vehicle, you've been driving around, you've been earning money, you've been getting to and from work, and then you find out that that car was stolen. The person that it was stolen from has lost out on time, money, work. Once you realize it was stolen, you owe something. You have a moral obligation to give that car back, and to repay the time that you've, you know, that that person has lost.
You have 15 seconds.
Thank you. So, you know, as Evanstonians, white Evanstonians, we've been driving a stolen car, and it's time we give back what was due. Thank you.
Thank you. Sue, welcome, Sue. Then we've got Tara Foster Lloyd, then Erin Brown.
Great, thank you. I'm Sue Lalabac. I'm with Connections for the Homeless here in Evanston, and joining forces for affordable housing. Regarding item A20, the RFP for the city's real estate assets and evaluation, it sounds like the purpose of that has to do with insurance, assessing properties for insurance purposes, but also looking at their best use. And given that, I'm wondering if we can't add some guidance in that RFP regarding what the city's goals are, thinking that that could potentially help the respondents, particularly in the case of affordable housing, to respond with those priorities in mind. Regarding SP three, the reparations item, the housing-related recommendations that are listed there are really in line with some of the most impactful programs that we have seen around the country. We are very much in support of those, and we ask that they really be taken seriously for action. We also ask that, or suggest that one way to move forward on them is to have the Equity and Empowerment Commission work closely with the Affordable Housing Plan Steering Committee, because that steering committee needs to be looking at exactly the types of solutions that are in that. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Sue. All right, we've got four more speakers, and that'll wrap it up. Tara, we got Tara Foster Lloyd, Erin Brown, then Priscilla Giles.
Greetings, neighbors. My name is Tara X. Foster Lloyd. I was born, raised, and still reside in Evanston, which is quite unbelievable, actually, being that people of color, black families especially, are being pushed and priced out of Evanston every day. That is white privilege and white supremacy. Evanston was informed at the 6/24/19 meeting that the scroll was the solution to this oppression and unaffordable housing, and yet, less than 15 scrolls were sold in Evanston that week. Talk about unwanted. There are four colors belonging to the black nation: black, brown, red, and yellow. Do you consider yourself a part of it? There are five colors belonging to humanity: black, brown, red, yellow, and white. Do you consider yourself at least a part of that? Okay, then, watch the news lately. How many of us were killed in Chicago, Cook County, El Paso, Ohio, in America? How many wrongfully locked up, chokehold it, handcuffed? How many of our small black children from one immediate family were shot in the heads by police officers in Oklahoma? At least three. How many of our brown children are still in ice cages, with thousands having been allegedly sexually molested while detained there?
Tara, I need you to wrap up in 10 seconds.
How many of us are homeless, even with your expensive degrees? Reparations is being spoken of throughout America and in Congress. One white female politician said about such things, quote, "It's called conquer. We won, you lost." But, Miss Politician, did you watch your news last night? It's called casualties. Casualties. Obviously, the war is not over, and God is not on the side of the oppressor. But make no mistake, America, Evanston, we choose violent over violence, and we do believe in self-defense. May I humbly suggest to any and all, get the scroll either from me, my website, or one of my sisters. Read it, learn from it, act on it. This is not an advertisement. This is 120 seconds of solution. Peace.
Thank you. Erin Brown, then Priscilla Giles, and then Henry Hawkins is the last. Welcome.
Yes, good evening. My name is Erin Brown. I've lived in Evanston for 10 years now. I am, this is the first time I've ever spoken here at a city council meeting, and with that first time, I want to be here in support of SP three and SP four. I want to share my support for both of those measures. In addition, I do want to make one clarification or recommendation for a change on SP three. The current language authorizes the city manager. I'd like to request that we authorize the interim city manager, who will be taking place shortly. Thank you.
Thank you for, thank you for coming out, and welcome. Ms. Giles, and then Henry Hawkins.
Do the contractors, thank you for this time, do the contractors, developers, and planners have their own private planes to spot green spaces in Evanston and green their pockets? Or have they been called to eliminate all green spaces and provide a smokescreen distraction from the needs of its most needy citizens, the majority of whom are black?
Thank you, Ms. Giles. All right, you're going to wrap it up for us, Henry, so welcome.
All right, thank you. I first want to start off and say I'm in support of reparations for black residents of Evanston. Also, as part of that support, citizens of Evanston need to be aware that diversity is being created on the backs of children of color in northwest Evanston schools, because they're being bused out of their neighborhoods. Again, let me repeat, they're being bused out of their neighborhood. This injustice has been going on for decades, and this is something that needs to change. It is very important that all children have the opportunity to attend a school in their neighborhood, and having a STEM community school in the Fifth Ward will allow for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. All right, and live, there's one final speaker, and it's Mr. Gibbs. Albert Gibbs. Carla, were you on there, too? All right, I lied twice, then, all right. Go ahead, go ahead, Albert. You'll go, and then we'll go to Carla Sutton, and then we'll close out public comment today.
You're the before age. I guess this'll be the shortest time I've ever spoken in life. I agree with SP three, SP four. I think the recommendation by the Equity and Empowerment Commission should be accepted and acted upon. I'm having a problem with this A18 contract with Phoenix Security. I smell a rat here. I thought two, three years or maybe more ago, we were, city council said, the budget couldn't be balanced unless we cut a lot of programs. We cut a lot of programs that were meant to help poor people, minorities, and so on and so forth. We're supposed to have a pretty good police department, but we have to hire an outside security firm to protect City Hall? I smell a rat here. That money could be used better someplace else. Why are we even entertaining something ridiculous as an outside security force? It actually says very little about what we are capable of doing as an Evanston Police Department. You have to hire a security firm to protect City Hall?
Mr. Gibbs, 10 more seconds, sir.
10 more seconds?
If you need it, or you could just wrap there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Sutton, come on up.
Good evening. Mayor Hagerty, Clerk Reed, manager Bobowitz, members of the city council, more specifically the Fifth Ward alderman, who I give commendations to and respect for having the courage and sensitivity to have SP three and SP sensitivity to have SP3 and SP4 considered tonight. Took a lot of courage to bring this out of the closet and out of the abuse that was being taken in this community, to bring it to have the place where it should be discussed by whites to make a decision that affects blacks. The three things I want to mention quickly. First, the support of SPC3. And secondly, I would like to thank Robin for this consideration, but my other consideration is concern is the funding. I think if this is a true commitment, it should not be sharing funds or competing with other groups in our community. It should be a set aside budget and amount of a minimum of $500,000 just for reparations, not for us to be fighting each other over who's going to get the biggest piece of the chicken out the pot. We're past that now and we have to move on. If you really mean what you say, put your money where your mouth is. Secondly, we need a ramp at 1620 Emerson for the elderly people. We asked the man who was pouring the curb the other day to leave a driveway there. He said it was impossible to do so. Robin, make him move that curb so the elderly people can get in with their wheelchairs. And third, Robin, I have one more request. My tree has a red mark on it at 2030 Dodge. Please save my tree. I played under that tree as a little boy. Don't cut that tree down, please.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Carlos. All right, that concludes public comment for this evening. Thank you, everybody, for speaking so eloquently about a variety of issues in our community. We're now going to move on to the special orders of business. As I mentioned before, we're going to move up SP3 and then we'll do SP4 and then we'll go to SP1 and SP2. So, for SP3, it's the Equity and Empowerment Commission's reparations recommendations to address wealth and opportunity gaps of African-American residents in Evanston. And the recommendation is for the city council to receive this report and authorize the city manager to conduct a feasibility study to determine the viability of the following recommendations: various housing assistance and relief initiatives for African-American residents in Evanston, and two various economic development programs and opportunities for African-American residents and entrepreneurs in Evanston. Is there anyone that would move this action?
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, plenty of seconds, okay. So, we're going to open this up for conversation. I'm going to turn to Alderman Ru Simmons first on this discussion. Alderman?
Thank you. I just want to start with an apology to the many mostly black and brown entrepreneurs that have invested in their business and are doing well, successes relative, and I want to apologize for the insults that you experienced earlier. Keep doing big things and being great if you're listening. So, also need to thank the Equity and Empowerment Commission for facilitating this process and leading the community in a open and public process and discussion to get feedback and weigh in on this local reparation. And thank you to more than 100 residents, now the list even growing more today, that have participated. Thank you for all the emails and the time invested in meetings and calls to consider I've talked about it a lot and so I'm happy that it's here at city council and I'd love to hear a discussion from my colleagues, but we are at this point because we have done a lot in Evanston to acknowledge discrimination and oppression and racism, and we have had resolutions and various policies and different honorific actions that have been appreciated over the lifetime of Evanston. And it has just not been enough. The racial wealth gap continues and the black residency rate continues to drop. And if we want to, as one of our core values, have racial equality and black equality and diversity, inclusion as something that we celebrate and something that is a top value that people usually state when they talk about why they love Evanston so much, I think that we are the community that is prepared to address this directly with a reparation and not shy away from it. It might be uncomfortable, but we have demonstratable evidence of damages done specifically and intentionally to black Evanston residents and targeted neighborhoods in Evanston. And I think that, from what I have seen in my experience in doing community work, elected and before being elected, that an intentional repair, an intentional policy, a budget that calls out support to uplift black Evanston residents specifically, is what we should be working towards. So, I also want to note that in this community process, there were several suggestions of actions that could be taken that are already in place. So, I want to make sure that we acknowledge and honor the great work that's already happening here at the city council and various committees in our community. And together with Gabby Johansson, student at Northwestern, we have put together a document that can send you to those resources that are already in place. And so, I will make it available at our ward meeting on Wednesday. We've shared it, I believe, at some of the community meetings to date, but I will make sure that we share it as well. So, some of the suggestions, there are already programs that are in place and I'll be sure to share that. So, I, the recommendation coming from the committee focuses on several areas that were taken from the community input. And I would like us to focus, give special attention to homeownership opportunities and preservation of existing homeownership and expanding entrepreneurship. So, I think I heard someone comment at $500,000 as a goal. My goal is $10 million, so $10 million over 10 years, and we will have to work on getting there. But I'm confident that we on city council can come up with some innovative and appropriate ways for us to designate those dollars. So, I will have some more comment on an amendment to the way the recommendation is written, but for now, I'll reserve comment.
Thank you, Alderman. The floor's open for conversation. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, thank you. Well, I want to applaud Alderman Ru Simmons. It did take courage to, you know, even probably say reparations and to move forward and have meetings and, so I definitely applaud you. I, you know, will support this. I know it is a big, you know, it's a big thing. There's lots that needs to happen probably in the community. I definitely would agree that homeownership and repair to property is key. Working at the county, there's lots of talk always about property taxes and I know, we all know there are a lot of people, you know, struggling to stay in their homes just because of property taxes and can't always get to the other things. So, I'm definitely supporting this, see how it moves along. One thing I do want to address that some speakers talked about was what used to be Foster School and is now Family Focus, and we know, you know, there's lots of conversations in the community regarding that building and the future of that building. I just want to always, for clarity, point out that we are the city council and when the decision was made to close that school, I can't remember the year, but, you know, 1960, what'd you say? 78, thank you. That was the decision made by the school board because the school board runs our schools. So, I wasn't here in 78. I was three. My family went to that school, but I just, you know, as people are talking about reparations, again, I don't know what this will flesh out to be, but that is really a discussion that I hope you all are also at the school board having because they are the ones who made that decision. They are the ones who we pay high tax dollars to to fund and educate our students. So, I hope that you are taking that passion and that advocacy over to that elected body. In addition to that, there was a referendum to open the school again. Public referendum that did not pass. So, as we're looking forward to new elections and all those kind of things, I just want to make sure we're using our energy wisely at the correct body. Obviously, we could decide as a city, I suppose, to buy that building, but we would not open up a school. That's not what we do. So, as much as I believe there should be a school there, that's not really our decision. So, anyway, all that to say, I definitely support this. Happy to push it forward. However, Alderman Ru Simmons and the community would like me to do. We've spoken about it at the 9th Ward meetings. People are also supportive there. So, hopefully, we will get this rolling and it will come back as something that can be hugely impactful in people's immediate life situations.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Alderman Braithwaite?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I always like the model of leading with a glass half-full and I think it's important to note that the discussion that we're having now is a discussion that we're having on a national level. And it's no surprise to me that our city of Evanston, with our staff and the leadership of the Alderman, are having this discussion. And I think Alderman Simmons, you mentioned earlier some of the noteworthy things and before I get into that, I want to thank the public that have come out, the people who have participated in the number of discussions and the thoughtfulness that they kind of took this on with a real serious intent. And some of the things that, as I look through the list of areas that they suggested, I think it's important, you talked about it, that we spend just a little bit of time to take note of it. So, right now, our city's budget, we spend $1.6 million in just one department alone and that's under Kevin Brown and the youth and young adult. Am I right, Wally? $1.6 million, about that? In resources. So, when she says, "In addition, $1 million out of 362 million," that is not a far stretch. That is a real number that we can be very careful and thoughtful about. And with a focus of our MWEBE committee and the work that we're doing, holding our contractors accountable with the economic development funds, and I really think it's important, I'm sorry if I go on, but I do need to address this issue that was brought up before, and I'm going to call out some names who are graduates of the entrepreneur class that was supported by full council. I think it's important to note that. And these are just a couple off the top of my head. Jennifer Eason, who is in a brick and mortar business, very successful business. Thank you very much, Jennifer Eason, for your sacrifice and also employing people in our black community. That is intentional. She graduated and her business is open. Marcus, from Marcus Dime, another phenomenal young brother who is dancing. He has expanded his contracts in District 65 and also in our community, amazing young talent, intentional. He is here in Evanston. Rachel and Tiffany Holmes, who are just in front of our Community and Economic Development, who not only were they graduates of the Sunshine Enterprises class, but through our Community and Economic Development, we also created additional funds to assist them with taking their business to the next level. Shannon Sudeth, who's working outside of Family Focus, who's expanding her business. Jonas Lee, 5th Ward resident, who is expanding his business. Look him up, Jonas on call. You need a handyman service? He's the person that you want to get in touch with. Seth Watson, who's now working out of Gibbs, you need to, that's a very talented brother in what he's doing. Kim Holmes, who also went through Sunshine and found her career path as a life coach and now she's working with Cradle and Career. The list goes on. And not only did people aspire to their dreams, but some people even found out that entrepreneurship is not for them and they're staying with their full-time jobs and taking care of their families. So, I just had to take a moment to acknowledge that work and as well acknowledge the council who supported those efforts and thank you very much, Alderman Simmons, for your leadership on that. So, as I wrap up, back on the reparations, we're doing a tremendous amount of work through the mayor's task force on workforce development. An amazing group of individuals who've come together to be very intentional with making sure that people have opportunities, real jobs with real wages that are going to allow them to stay in their homes and support their families. This past year, we've had facade improvements specifically to target 5th Ward businesses. Right at the corner of Church and Dodge, you'll see some specific improvements. And also, again, dollars spent, your tax dollars being invested in black-owned businesses. The financial literacy that myself and Alden Grove, I remember going away to National Leagues of City and bringing that back and Alderman Simmons revived it within this past year, which addresses some of the issues that were brought up. The list goes on. I think what's important is that we're having the conversation. It's being embraced by our city council. I will support passing this and I think the two bullet points on housing economic development is right on spot with where we need to be to make this a reality. So, thank you very much, Alderman Simmons, and thank you in advance to our city council because I know this is going to go through unanimously.
Great, thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. Alderman Wilson?
And just super briefly, but, and I think the three of you have done a very nice job on the acknowledgements of the people that have been involved so far. But throughout the community, this, it's obviously, it's not just a historical story problem. It's about present existing impediments to opportunities. The list is very long. We have existing problems now, educational opportunities, predatory lending, deceptive actions. I've seen a number of situations with reverse mortgages. It's a lot of subversive things that continue to go on in the community. So, things happened a long time ago, but things are still happening. So, these are all important steps that we need to take. And Alderman Simmons, I think you talked a little bit about doing, suggesting a subcommittee to develop these more specifically and fully in the context?
Yeah, so, thank you. So, my intention was for the city council to work on this. I think that we are committed as a body and we represent the residents. It was ideal that the residents weighed in heavily on this and we have your feedback and your input. So, my recommendation is instead of it going to the city manager for a feasibility study, that it comes to city council, to a subcommittee that can be volunteer, anyone join, with the support of our legal department because there have been some expressed concerns about legal concerns. So, that would be my recommendation, that instead of going to the city manager, that it comes to a subcommittee for the city council with the support of legal.
And I think that makes sense. It's particularly with transition in the city manager's office so it doesn't kind of sit for months, so.
Right. And also, just with a deadline and a timeline so that it doesn't get tabled or pushed off. It was a goal that we could get something passed in this calendar year. So, I would like us to, you know, whoever is willing to volunteer for that committee, for us to work on it together. I think that we are the appropriate body to do the work. We're here for the residents and that's what I would like to see.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Ru Simmons. Alderman Rainey?
Yes, one of the things I was going to suggest is that we can't do this alone. We can't, we can't make reparation for people who have wanted to own homes, who have wanted to repair their homes, who have wanted to renovate their homes. One of the biggest problems in the United States of America, regardless of black, brown, white, or otherwise, is redlining by banks and others based on, based on wealth and lack of wealth. And today is even, there's even a worse problem. People who have, who have very good incomes are having a lot of difficulty getting mortgages. So, it would be my suggestion that we divide up, once we pass this, recommend that go to a committee or subcommittees, maybe even more than one subcommittee of the council, that we divide this up and we include the banks and lenders in this and they have to cooperate, they have to participate with us because that's where the money is. The money is in here. We're adding 25, we're asking the council and the people of the We're adding 25, we're asking the council and the people of this town to contribute another quarter of percent to the sales tax, to the, to the local sales tax, because we don't have enough money. And I know somebody here said, "The money is there, and we just have to find it." Well, I'll tell you where the money is. The money's in the banks. And we have to include that kind of money if we're going to work on helping people buy houses and fix their homes. Because you know what HUD gives us, very little money. And money that we're getting from real estate transfer tax, that already, like you've already said, that already goes to help with the general fund, to help people who are in need already. As does the sales tax. I mean, the sales tax helps keep down people's property tax, helps keep down people's rent. So the more we take out of the city budget, the more it costs everybody to survive in Evanston. So there's, there's always the balance problem going on. So I think we have to reach out and find sources of funds. I don't know how many other communities, localities, municipalities are taking on the burden of reparation all by themselves. I can't believe it's happening every place. I think we need help, and let's go get it. Because if reparation is so well-embraced by our community, then everybody has to help. And I think every single thing you vitimize as being important is important, maybe even more important than you're saying. But we have to have help.
I don't disagree.
Yeah. So let's do it. And I'd be glad to help.
Thank you. We would need your institutional knowledge, so, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
I know where the money is. I'm just not sure how to get it.
Well, one for Alderman Ru Simmons. The list that you talked about, that you put together, can you provide that to everybody? The list of other resources that you said you were going to share at your award meeting? The list of other programs?
I shared it at one of the community meetings, so I'll share it with the council.
Yeah, that would be great. Because sometimes I send people to the website and it's a little difficult. And just real quickly regarding to Alderman Rainey, I think you're correct, but I think also the way you get input is that we have lots of banks and they hold lots of our money as a city. And I think that if we let them, yeah, I mean, I think we have lots of leverage in that we have lots of money in the bank. And I think we should have expectations for people we do business with. I also think as we look at potentially these new, you know, new sales tax of .25, how great would it be to say, "That's going to go in our reparations fund"? And so shop local, because you're also helping your neighbor. I don't, not a lawyer, I don't know how you do that, but I think there's ways that we can do this without it being a fight between, you know, do you pave another street, or do you help your neighbor out? People always talk about helping our neighbor, so I think there's many creative ways we could do it, that people might be willing to continue to shop local if they know that money is going towards a certain thing.
Yes, I mean, I've had some, pardon? Okay. Well, I would like to say that, you know, the community has, some members of the community have embraced this and even offered a tax to fund this. So these are things I would like to discuss with the subcommittee. I don't want to own the ideas. I want to talk with our colleagues and use the feedback that we have from the community to come up with some ideas. But there are some ideas. I have mentioned part of the graduated real estate transfer tax, a percentage of that. But you're right, that is already going to our general fund. But if we're going to prioritize it, then we might have to make some sacrifices. So I'm inviting council to a subcommittee to work on this.
Great. Yeah, why don't you go ahead? I see no further comments. Let's go ahead and make the motion.
Thank you. I move that we accept recommendation from the Equity and Empowerment Commission to move forward with a local reparation and that it go to a subcommittee of the Evanston City Council, staffed and supported by our legal department.
Second. Would, okay, I just have, give one question, I guess. Would it also be staffed by our Equity and Empowerment Coordinator? Would that person be involved?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think we're going to need to have some flexibility to make sure there's enough staff to support this. So as long as you could give the city manager, the interim city manager, that authority, we'll manage through it.
So just as long as the legal department is on there? Yeah.
I would just like to give them some relief from having to schedule meetings and take notes and things like that, so if we can have other staff support the legal department in that effort.
Well, so my reason is because there's been some concerns to come up about if this is legal or not. So it just seems more efficient to have them there as part of the working group.
And absolutely. I think I'm just, what I'm saying is, we would like additional support for the legal department through this, that's all.
Yeah, all I was saying is that it's not, it's not exclusive of other departments or whatever helping out.
No, I mean, I think that many, I mean, the health department should, you know, economic development, I mean, that-
Whoever's appropriate.
Right, whoever's appropriate, including the legal department.
Absolutely.
Alderman Ru Simmons, we will participate. There's just a lot of administrative support that's needed when we form the subcommittees. Agendas posting, minutes, research. And so I appreciate the support to the law department. We already have other, so, anyway, other staff members would be great.
Absolutely.
I think we're all on the same page. Okay. All right, so we had a motion. It was seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, SP3 is going to move forward to a subcommittee of the Evanston City Council. All right, let's go, let's go now to SP4, which is still with the Equity and Empowerment Commission. And this is their truth and reconciliation recommendation. They recommend that the city council endorse and support a citywide truth and reconciliation initiative in conjunction with Resolution 58-R-19, which was passed a couple months ago. Commitment to End Structural Racism and Achieve Racial Equity adopted unanimously at June 10th, 2019 Evanston City Council meeting. This is for action. Is there anyone that'll move that? Move or approve?
Second.
Okay, it's now, the floor is open. Alderman Ru Simmons?
This is actually a light from SP3. Did we need to form that committee?
That's what my question was.
Right, yeah.
I know you can't see my light, but I need to know who's on the committee.
Oh, for-
Subcommittee that was just formed.
Oh, on the subcommittee. On the subcommittee. So now you're, we're moving back to SP3. You just want to, okay, we can, who would like to be on that subcommittee?
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Indeed. Alderman Rainey and Alderman Fleming? Okay.
Is that too many? Oh, yeah, okay.
Fleming, Ru Simmons. Okay, yep.
Ladies.
Does that work? Okay, so we've got Alderman Rainey, Alderman Fleming, Alderman Ru Simmons will be on that subcommittee. Terrific, thank you. All right, now back to SP4. The floor is open for any questions or comments. Okay, Alderman Fleming?
I have a question. Well, I have a comment, I guess. So I appreciate the idea, you know, I'm leery to lots of conversation about how you feel and all that. But my comment, or my request, I guess, is can we, this is for Dr. Effiem, because I assume you're the one speaking on this. So I'm having a little bit of trouble with the reconciliation term. It's right, reconciling means that you've had a harmonious relationship and there was a tear and you came back, right? So I want to push us to, maybe we haven't had that harmonious, people in the community don't all feel like they've had that racial harmony. So I would love to, as we move forward, think about some other terminology. I'm going to support it, but I would like us to think past reconciliation. The Kellogg Foundation uses truth healing, or truth and racial healing, or something like that. So that's my question. I mean, that's my suggestion for this. And then also, one last thing. So this is an out, can you explain this a little bit? This is kind of an outward thing that the commission is working on. And you and I have had some conversations that will be coming back to council regarding the internal workings, because as Alderman Wilson mentioned, we have lots of impediments here in this building that I think we need to continue to focus on. So can you kind of explain how these two are different?
Sure. Good evening, Dr. Effiem, Chief Equity Officer for the City of Evanston. We do agree with you, Alderman Fleming, that we are not ready for the reconciliation that involves lots and lots of conversation and really some agreement by community. We are recommending the Truth and Racial Equity Initiative. So it's truth-seeking racial equity that we propose as the title for this. But this, again, is just a working title that ultimately we will develop into an initiative. In terms of the outward-facing, absolutely. What you've seen tonight and heard is that there is that public-facing part that has to hap, that has to happen, that has to go on, that has to engage the community, and that is the work of the Equity and Empowerment Commission. We see very much the work of the Equity and Empowerment Office as doing that internal work that we talked about. I will point, for example, to the City of Evanston Library, where they have been able to take and train all of their, all of their staff. And that, that has led to them being able to do, for example, to take their job descriptions. Their board, their staff are reviewing their job descriptions and taking out those unnecessary degrees or impediments that would prevent someone who otherwise wouldn't be able to apply for the job. That internal work is work that oftentimes you do not see. The work of equity, you often cannot see it. And so that's the work internally. This work that you're seeing about the initiative, that comes from the commission and is to engage the community.
Thank you, Alderman Fleming. Thank you, Dr. Effiem. Why don't you stay up there, just in case we have any more? I got a couple lights on here. Alderman, one?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that Dr. Effiem has explained what I was going to explain also. This is something, I am a member of the Equity and Empowerment Commission, and this is something that, on our chair, one of our co-chairs, Jane Grover, is here tonight as well. This is something that at the commission, we have been discussing at length over time, while we've done these other things as well, of really having a discussion and outward-facing efforts in the community to work on, as you said, truth and seeking racial equity, because we recognize that this is a long process and there really is not a clear final destination at this point. So I am, I am very much looking forward to participating in this, and I think that this is going to be a very interesting process for everyone in Evanston. I'm, I'm, I will say, I'm very impressed by all of the steps we have taken in Evanston over the last year and the one we just took tonight. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to this, and I hope the rest of the council supports this and participates with us.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman, one? And thank you again to the Equity and Empowerment Commission for all the work that they've done with your help, Dr. Effiem. Seeing no more lights, we had a motion and a second. And, and this is to endorse and support a citywide truth and seeking racial equity, we'll call it, initiative. So all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so this SP4 has passed. The Equity and Empowerment Commission will continue their work on that. So thank you, thank you, everyone. All right, we're going to move now to SP1. SP1 is to discuss the city manager hiring process. And we're going to talk about a memo that we've all seen before that, seen before, that lays out sort of a process and directs the human services resource manager to solicit quotes for qualified vendors to perform an executive search for Evanston City, next city manager, and provide other direction to the staff. So is there anyone that'll move this motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, so, all right, this, the floor is now open for SP1 to have a conversation about that. Okay, seeing, seeing no lights?
I have a question, I'm sorry. So I know this is, so we are just approving, I want to make sure we're just approving, this is the draft, right? We still have time to make some changes?
Yeah, this is not, this is not the, just so everybody's clear, this is not the job description for the city manager. This is just approving that city, the city manager's office, or actually, the HR office will go out with a solicitation to hire an executive search firm.
Okay.
So this just starts that process.
Right, I just want to be clear, because as you see in reading SP1, it lays out kind of-
I understand, yes.
So we need to be clear that the process is not set in stone yet.
So this, that's correct. Alderman Rainey?
And we'll have an opportunity to review the responses.
Yep, absolutely. They'll summarize those and bring those to the next, I think, what council meeting?
We're going to shoot for the next council meeting if we're not able to do that. We'll forget the following council meeting. So either the 23rd or October 14th.
Okay.
But we're going to do everything we can to have you something in two weeks.
That would be great. That would be great. Okay, so do I need to do, I guess I need to do a roll call vote, because money's being spent on this over 20? Is that right?
You're just directing us to solicit proposals.
Okay, so we're not, we're not doing the contract. Okay, so this was moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, SP1 passes the Evanston City Council on a nine-to-zero vote. We're going to move now to SP2, which is Resolution 87-R-19, appointing an interim city manager. I'm recommending the adoption of this resolution, appointing Erica Storley as our interim city manager to assume all the roles and responsibilities following city manager Bob Kowitz's departure for his new job out in Washington State and prior to the appointment of a new city manager. Does anyone want to move this?
Move approval.
Is there a second? Okay, all right, it's open for conversation. Alderman, it's over, then?
I guess the one thing, I have a question, since this is being presented as a take it or leave it, with Erica, who else was considered? Who made the decision that Erica Storley would be the choice? And why is it being presented this way?
Thank you, thank you. So it's my recommendation, and I do apologize if the memo wasn't clear there, because it's from me, and I think it's its staff recommends, but I want to make it clear. I'm making this recommendation to the city council. You know, Erica Storley has served as our assistant city manager. She has been with the city for 10 years. I think she's highly capable and qualified to lead us during this transition period. I don't think it makes sense to bring someone in from the outside to come in for six to nine months while we do a nationwide search. And I think she will lead us well. So that was my rationale. Alderman Wilson?
All right, I'm still going.
Okay.
So in light of the fact that we got a draft contract this afternoon and that Bob Kowitz will be here till the end of the month, I don't know why we need to do this tonight. Is there any compelling reason why we need to name Erica Storley the interim city manager tonight before we've had a chance to discuss the contents of her contract?
So my recommendation, my recommendation would be that if we move on this tonight, it would be contingent on us reaching a agreement with the council, because it's a personnel matter. We would handle that in executive session in terms of what that interim contract would look like. But that we would pass this tonight with that contingency that we reach an agreement.
Why wouldn't we just reach the agreement?
Say again?
Why wouldn't we reach the agreement in executive session next week and then ratify it in the meeting the following?
I would, I would, I think it's probably in the city's best interest that, given that city manager Bob Kowitz is, you know, out of here, you know, in a week almost, the 23rd will be here, it's last week, for the city staff and from transition purposes from the city manager to whoever's going to be our interim city manager, probably makes sense to start that as soon as possible.
The 23rd? I thought it was the 27th.
It's last council meeting, so 23rd.
So I mean, wouldn't that be an appropriate time to finalize this?
I think the transition should start as soon as possible, between him and whoever the acting is going to be.
I mean, the interim tag doesn't give Erica any new powers, I mean, immediate.
No, but I mean, it allows our city manager, who's leaving the state, to know who that next person's going to be, that's going to act as the interim for the six-month period or nine-month period while we do the search.
Yeah, seems backwards to me.
Okay, all right. Alderman Wilson, then Alderman Fleming?
You covered one of the primary points, but I was going to suggest that we amend the resolution to add in section one, just language that says, shall be appointed subject to completion of a contract agreement, something along those lines, to cover that contingency. I think as far as transparency is concerned, I think it's important to make the designation, the actual contract negotiations do take place in executive session. So I think it's just fair for the community to know who we're negotiating with, because there isn't a public process. So I think it's important to put that out there right out of the box. And I can't imagine a scenario where it wouldn't work out, but we wouldn't want to be, you know, doing this at the last second. So I think naming the person, completing the contract negotiations at that next executive session makes the most sense timewise.
Thank you.
So I would move that we maybe address that part first. So I move that we amend section one of this resolution to change it to add language such that it reads Assistant City Manager and Director of Administrative Services Erica Storley shall be appointed interim city manager to perform the city manager functions and duties due to position vacancy, comma, subject to completion of... Subject to execution of a contract agreement.
Second.
All right. On that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm sorry.
Oh. I thought we had to, I thought we had to go, I thought we had to go with that amendment, though.
That's just the amendment.
Just on the amendment. Okay. We're going to go back then to the whole thing, so just amending that. Okay. So all, all in favor, or is anyone opposed to that amendment? Okay. So then Alderman Fleming.
Yeah, so I, you know, that, my, I guess my concern more so is that, as much as I respect Erica, that this, you know, our council rules or city code or whatever say that the city council shall designate, and as much as I would vote for Erica, I guess, I don't feel like the council, I mean, you just said that you made the decision, and I understand why you made the decision, but the, the rules are that the council will make the decision, so probably none of us had anyone else to suggest, but it would be nice as part of this council to be at least considered, to see if I had another opinion for who the interim might be.
Right. So just to, just to make sure everybody's on the same page, I don't make the decisions. I don't sit up here and make the decisions, but as a citywide elected official, I certainly at times make recommendations, and tonight I'm making a recommendation that our assistant city, city manager be the interim city manager. See, ultimately, you, you are the body that, you know, decide.
Right, but what, all right, so I'm not getting into semantics. What I'm saying is that, yes, you can make, so you're making the recommendation, that's fair. I could vote no, because I didn't get a choice to even weigh in. I mean, I don't think, we don't usually do personnel matters in this way, right? So if I want to say, hey, what about Kimberly or Joe Blow, I don't necessarily do that at this body, because it's a personnel matter, and this is not an executive session where I would say, hey, I don't support Erica for this, or I do support Erica for that. So this doesn't feel to me, although I understand you're just making a recommendation, and we can approve or not, this doesn't feel like the space in which I would have a discussion about who I do or do not support, right? There wasn't a time for that to happen, because this is now a public meeting, and we don't talk about personnel. So I'm saying that it would have been nice if this was the recommendation, if there had been some conversation we could have, not in this public forum, about my thoughts for that.
I understand. All right. Seeing, seeing no more lights.
I move that we adopt the resolution as amended.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Resolution 87 R dash 19, appointing interim city manager passes as amended on a nine to zero vote. All right. We're going to now move into the consent agenda. Alderman Braithwaite, could you take us through the consent agenda, starting with the minutes and all the way through APW, and then I'm going to have Alderman Rue Simmons take us through planning and development, and then the, the appointments as well.
All right. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, I'd like to move item A1, payroll July 8th through July 21st, in the dollar amount of $3,101,535.54. I'd also like to move item A1, two bills list, August 13th, 2019, BMO credit card activity for the period ending June 26th, in the dollar amount of $8,607,925.29, and also $199,864.63. Item 8.2, payroll July 22nd, 2019 through August 4th, 2019, in the dollar amount of Payroll August 5th, 2019 through August 18th, 2019, in the dollar amount of $2,924,326.33. Item 8.22, bills list, September 10th, 2019, in dollar amount of $5,463,829.69. BMO credit card activity for the period ending July 26th for action, $211,723.86. Item 3.1, BMO Harris Amazon credit card activity for the period ending June 26th, 2019, in dollar, in the dollar amount of $17,000.
Yeah, yank that off, please.
So that one, we're going to, so you can skip over A31, assume those are off, and then we'll do a separate vote on those. Yep.
And then BMO Harris, Amazon, oop, that, that one too.
So it's eight, just so we're all clear, it's A3.1, A3.2 that are being taken off.
Yep.
All right.
All right. Keep going.
Yep. All right. Item 8.4, it's the approval of the contract with Morton Salt Company for the purchase of rock salt. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $599.25. Twenty-five dollars. Twenty-five dollars. Thank you for the correction. Item A5, approval of purchase of WEG Electric Corporation for the high lift pump exploitation system replacement. That's in dollar amount of $60,000. Item A6, approval of a one-year contract extension with Thielin Materials LLC for the 2019 leaf hauling disposal contract. That's in the dollar amount of $40,000. I'd like to move item A7, contract award with Boulder Contractors Inc. for the Oakton Street Water Supply Connection for the Village of Lincolnwood, and that's going to be in dollar amount of $2,600,000 with the, yep, that's right. Dollar, excuse me, move item A6, approval of the contract award with Seabreeze Direct Inc. for the utility bill printing and mailing services. That's in the dollar amount of $201,829. Yeah, that's enough. Item A9, approval of the contract to purchase water treatment chemicals for fiscal year 2020. The total of these is $590,374.25. That's also for action. Item A10 is the contract award from Assistia Form Technologies USA LLC for the 2019 CIPP sewer rehab project. That's in the dollar amount of $339,995.70. Also, item A11, approval of the change order number three with a Thielin Construction Inc. for the Clearwell Water Storage Replacement Project. That's going to be in the fund amount of $20,556,256. And the change order amount, pardon me, is going to be 46,593. I'd like to move item A12, is approval of change order for Garland Inc. for the fire station second, fire station two roof replacement project. That's going to be in the dollar amount, contract amount of $234,057. Item A13 is contract award for Sports For Life for the tennis program at the Chandler Newburger Center. There's no dollar amount for that, but there's going to be a 70/30 split. I, A14 is the approval for the special events Evanston made, makers market. That's going to be February, excuse me, September 29th, between 12:00 PM and 7:00 PM. Costs for the city provided by the events require 100% reimbursement from the sponsoring organization or event coordinator. Item A15 is the approval of the purchase of the four sprint treadmills for the Levy Center, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of not to exceed $23,160. Item A16 is the approval of the replacement of the Arrington Lakefront Lagoon Shelter Washroom Doors and Windows, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $34,560. And there was one correction that needs to be made on the last sentence, and it's the funding for this vehicle that needs to be amended. That's a typo there, will be from the capital improvement, so I think what they mean there is the project. A17 is the approval of the lease agreement with Dell Computer Corporation for the purchase of 50 Dell computers. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $31,860. And after the lease is complete, the computers can be purchased from Dell for a dollar. Item 18 is a contract with Phoenix, oh...
Wasn't that taken off?
He's going to get to it. It wasn't taken off.
Yes.
Did we hold in committee?
Held in committee.
Held in committee, right?
Phoenix is taken off.
Okay, okay. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, that held in committee, that was held in...
Referring. To rules.
Referring over to rules. Okay. Thank you for the correction. So that was, item A18 was referred to the rules committee.
Executive session.
Okay. It's executive session. Yes. Okay. For those who paid attention. Item A19 is the contract renewal with the Evanston Township High School to provide crossing guards, traffic patrol services. That is going to be in the dollar amount of $30,650. Item A20 is the approval of the draft request for the proposal 19-47 cities, real estate assess, assets and evaluation. That's going to be in the dollar amount of $150,000. Item A21 for action is the approval of contract extensions with Owens Group Inc. and Arthur Gallagher Co. for the insurance brokerage services, and that's going to be in the dollar amount of $43,000 per year. Item A22 is the approval of the contract extension with Snitchich? Snitchich. For the audit services, and that's going to be, I think it's $100,000 is budgeted for that. Item A23 is the approval of the request to extend alcohol services for the one-day events for Levy Premium Food Service. And then, excuse me, we'd also like to, this is for introduction, it's ordinance 89.0-19.
Hold that, please.
Okay. That's going to be off the agenda, the request of Alderman suffered in. Item, hold on one second. Item A25 is ordinance 88-0-19, amending the section of the Title X, Chapter 11, Schedule 12 Parking Meter Zones, adding a portion of Madison Street. That's going to be Chicago Avenue to Customs Enforcement will be from 8:00 AM to 9:00 PM, and will have a rate of 50 cents per hour. That's for introduction. Action item A26 is ordinance, excuse me, for introduction, ordinance 94-0-19, amending the portion of the city code, sections 10, there's 11-10, Schedule X, parentheses, C, two-hour limited parking, and that is going to be at the west side of Dodge Avenue from Church Street to the first alley thereof. So basically, the corner of Church and Dodge, and that's for introduction. Ordinance A27, 84-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 10, Schedule X, parentheses, C, two-hour limited parking, and that's going to be at the east side of Maple Avenue from Garnet Place to Foster. Item A28 is ordinance 85-0-19, amending the Title X, Chapter 11, Section 10, Schedule XF8, residential exception parking District G, and that's going to impact the west of Maple on the north side of Foster Street to District G. That's also for introduction. Item A29 is ordinance 91-0-19, amending the various sections of Title X, Chapter 11, pertaining to the city of Evanston parking lots, and that's going to be Howard Street as construction is complete on the new lot and various other amendments to bring the city code up to date with provision parking rate and hour changes. I'd also like to move for introduction, ordinance 87-0-19, proposing consideration of scheduling the dates for the joint review board meeting and public hearing to consider proposed first amendment to Howard in Ridge Tiff District redevelopment plan, so staff is recommending city council approve the ordinance establishing dates for the Howard Tiff Amendment Public Hearing and Joint Review Meeting. Item number 31, and that is going to be for introduction and action, staff is recommending that ordinance 97-0-19, decreasing the number of Class D liquor licenses from 55 to 53, removing the license held by Blaze Pizza and Siam Pasta. Pretty straightforward. Item A32 is ordinance 101-0-19, also for introduction and action, decreasing the number of Class C liquor licenses from 23 to 22, removing the license held by HKKK, better known as Boltwood. Item A3, excuse me, A33, at the recommendation of Alderman Revelle, she's recommending the suspension and rules, and for this to be for introduction, action is ordinance 102-0-19, increasing the number of Class D liquor license from 53 to 54 for Comida Cantina. Item 34 is ordinance 103-0-19, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses from 53 to 54 for Mid Kitchen.
Alderman, hold.
And that's going to be for introduction and action.
On that, item on A34, Michelle, should that just read, the clerk picked this up, should that read from 54 to 55 now? Basically, we took two off earlier, and now we're adding two. I'm not sure how, this is, yeah, this is the D licenses. Anyway, I'm not sure.
When we write these ordinances, we can't assume you're going to approve these, so when we pass them, we will write in style.
I see. Okay. Got it. Got it. All right. Go on. I'm sorry, Alderman Braithwaite.
No worries. So, you sure? Okay. So again, that's item 34, the request of Alderman Wilson, we're suspending the rules, and that's going to be for intro and introduction and action, and that's item 103-0-9, increasing the number of Class D liquor licenses. We'll rectify the number later. Item A35 is ordinance 78-0-19, amending the portions of the city code to set rates for the home football game day parking. And so vehicles in Evanston will be considered non-Evanston residents will be charged 20 to $40 per hour parking, the first come, first served basis will be, excuse me, per day. Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that correction. Those, and that is going to be posted on the city's website and in the parking lot. That is for action. And that's, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, that concludes the consent.
Thank you, Alderman Braithwaite. There was a lot going on there at APW tonight. Can you do two things for me? Can you go back? I was just, again, I was trying to follow all this. I just worried if we may have missed A6.
A6?
So if you could just introduce that one again, and then I got one other minor issue with the number that you rattled off.
I'd like to move item A6 for action, and that is the approval of the one-year contract extension with Thielin Materials LLC to nine, the 2019 leaf hauling and disposal contract. And that's in the dollar amount of $40,000.
Thank you. And then A12, you just cited the wrong number on that, so I just wanted to clarify. A12, it should be the 286.
Where are we? A12?
This is the change order to the fire station?
Yep. The change order in the dollar amount of, did you say, from, from 234,000, excuse me, 234,057 to 286,023?
Excellent. Excellent. Thanks. Thank you. Okay. Alderman Rue Simmons, could you take us through planning and development and the appointments?
Yes. P1...
Can you remove that, please?
You said hold.
Can you remove it?
Remove it?
Yes.
P2, Resolution 74R19, approval of plat of re-subdivision for 1211 through 1217 Ridge Avenues for action. P3, ordinance 104019, extending the time for the applicant to obtain a building permit to construct the residential unit in the planned development previously authorized by ordinance 3908. Alderman Wen is recommending suspension of the rules and introduction and action. And then the appointments.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Alderman, do, with this respect to P3, does that need to be removed, because I'm requesting suspension of the rules?
I didn't think so, but could you tell me?
You're now requesting suspension?
I am requesting suspension of the rules. It's already been in, it's on the, it's on the agenda.
Did you guys vote on suspension of the rules during the subcommittee?
We did.
We did. Okay. Then how it's typically done, the mayor typically says, all of the items that are noted during the subcommittees for suspension of the rules, and then you take a separate vote, and then you vote on the consent agenda. One note, Alderman Rue Simmons, for P2, could you just note that there was an amendment to that resolution to add a section 2D regarding that easement? Remember, we added the language?
Okay. P2, adding, you did it for me? Okay. Make a note. Got it. Okay. And then what about P3? We're fine. Thank you. APP1, Arts Council, we have Masai Emwa. Mental Health Board, Demita Cravens. Mental Health Board, Rodney Orr. Mental Health Board, Archana Sud. Preservation Commission, Beth Bowden. Zoning Board of Appeals, Max Putel. And for reappointments, we have Environmental Board, Jerry Girl. Zoning Board of Appeals, Marne Arrevalo. Zoning Board of Appeals, Marne Arrevalo. Transportation and Parking, Alejandro Anan, is for action.
All right, thank you, Alderman. So, am I going to do? Yeah, I'm going to do a vote. Can someone just move?
Approval.
Approval, second.
This is just on suspension of the rules, okay. And, do I have to do a roll call vote on that?
It's on the consent agenda.
Okay, all right. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so, everything that was suspending the rules has been approved. Now we're going to go ahead and have the clerk take the roll on the consent agenda.
Alderman Brathwaite.
Yep.
Alderman Nguyen.
Yes.
Alderman Wilson.
Yes.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Yes.
Alderman Sufferton.
Yes.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
All right, the consent agenda passes the Evanston City Council on a nine to zero vote. We're now going to go to the items that were taken off. Alderman Brathwaite, can you introduce A31?
Yep, you got it. Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move item A3.1, the BMO, excuse me, BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity for the period ending June 26, 2019, and that's going to be in dollar amount of $17,241. I'd also like to move for action item A3.2, BMO Harris Amazon Credit Card Activity for the period ending July 26, 2019, and that's in a dollar amount of $8,080.84.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, City Clerk, could you take the roll on A31 and A32?
Alderman Brathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
All right, the A3.
Alderman, I'm sorry.
Alderman Fisk, I said aye.
All right, all right, excellent, okay. So, A31, A32, Amazon Credit Card passes on City Council on an eight to zero vote with Alderman Sufferton abstaining. Alderman Brathwaite could take us to A24.
Yep, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, I'd like to move item, ordinance 89-0-19, amending the municipal retailer's occupation tax to increase the rate of, from 1% to 1.25. Staff recommending City Council adoption of this ordinance, municipal retailer's occupation tax, home rule tax, we call it, to increase that rate.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
This is for introduction.
This is for introduction, and the funds will be deposited to our general funds.
So it's open for conversation.
No.
Okay, seeing none, City Clerk, could you take the roll, please?
Alderman Brathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
No.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
All right, so, ordinance 89-0-19, amending the municipal retailer's occupation tax to increase the rate assessed from 1% to 1.25. For introduction, passes the Evanston City Council on a seven to two vote. All right, Alderman Ru Simmons, could you take us to P1?
P1, the Housing and Homelessness Commission and staff recommend approval of a funding renewal of $300,000 in home funds to continue the current tenant-based rental assistance program administered by Connections for the Homeless. The funding will provide stable housing for two years for up to 10 at-risk families with children under the age of 18 in Evanston that are underemployed and break the cycle of poverty and instability by developing the capacity to earn a living wage to support their families and afford market-rate rental housing. Funding is from the Home Investment Partnerships Program. Currently, the city has a total of $464,317 in available uncommitted home funds, is for action.
Okay, all right, the floor is open for any conversation. Alderman Fleming?
Yes, so I have some questions about the selection procedures, it's on page 623. I know the Connections people left, but, so it has language in there that I know is meant to be, I'm sure, helpful. However, we're talking about families, some of which maybe have been homeless or currently homeless or have a variety of issues, and criteria like ability to, you know, have a lease and utilities in their name. I understand the purpose for that, but you also understand if you're homeless, you maybe have had an eviction or some other kind of financial issues that have put you onto the street, so I'd want to make sure that Connections is also helping people to get to the point where they can have a lease in their name, because it's going to be unattainable for lots of people who are homeless. The other option is, I mean, the other thing on here is, agree to have all children's medical, educational, and psychosocial needs assessed. I'm not sure, aside from making sure if someone's in a wheelchair and they're in an AD accessible unit, that if we are making sure they are stable and providing them housing support, I guess, for lack of a better term, why we need to be concerned with their medical and educational needs. I mean, I think if we're getting referred from a school social worker, that's something that a social worker can bring up as it pertains to housing, but that might be something that, you know, families consider private, and, you know, when I go to apply for an apartment, that's not something I'm asked, and so this is an issue for me in that this might be something that keeps some families from participating because they're embarrassed or don't want to have those medical discussions with the case manager regarding their housing. Another issue that I had is, I guess that's really the main thing, my other question that wasn't clear on here is who then is making this decision? So I imagine we have many families who might apply, who maybe meet all the criteria, so who's making that final decision to decide who gets the housing and who doesn't get the housing?
Mayor Hagerty, members of City Council, City Manager Bob Kowick, and Clerk Reed, Sarah Flax, Housing and Grants Manager. I'll try to address the minute order, you may have to reiterate some of the questions. The requirement of the lease being in the tenant's name is a requirement of the home program. That is not something that Connections has applied. That is a requirement for using home funds in this way. And there are many people who can't qualify to have a lease in their own name, and there are other programs that Connections works to get those families and individuals in. But that isn't something that we have applied to the program, that is a requirement of the source of funding. The goal of Connections case management is to provide really sound and solid case management and try to address the needs of all members of the family. I can ask for more details about exactly how they work with the school social workers, but they work very closely with the school social workers. This isn't, this isn't something that they require that doesn't seem to be a cooperative work with the schools. So I don't think that you're concerned that they're really digging into things that people don't want to share, is there? But I'll be happy to check into that.
Okay, so, the part about the children's medical education and psychosocial needs, is that a requirement of home as well, or that's a requirement of Connections?
Well, that, one of the goals is to try to get all children who are having any issues in the schools, the social workers try to get them, my understanding is to get them assessed for any of their needs as well. So as I say, I don't see that as something that's separate.
I understand that, so if the school is doing that, I guess I don't know what that has to do with someone who needs housing and why we are adding that as a requirement. It's one thing to say, if needed, or something, but this is a requirement of, this is how they're selected.
I can check into that and get back to you with more details.
Yes, I object to that. And I guess what I would want this to be is that the requirements we put on here are the requirements that the home funding require, that we're not putting additional burdens on people who are housing insecure already.
Well, one of the challenges is, it's, we don't have, these are not programmed, we don't have the funding necessarily to keep a family in the program, like with a housing choice voucher, where it's, so there are decisions made as to what families appear to have the ability to get economically self-sufficient in a two-year period of time, because if we don't make some decisions based on that, or if some decisions aren't made based on that, then we risk having a lot of families fall off the cliff when they get to that two-year period, or we end up simply renewing every T-BRA household, and in essence, turning T-BRA into a housing choice voucher, which is, doesn't have a end period until the household income falls, you know, above the, so.
Right, so for us to have requirements that have to do with that makes sense.
Right.
For us to have requirements that have to do with the child's medical background, do not, in my opinion. And then, so who's making the choice, like who's making the final decision, who gets selected?
The staff at Connections makes the final decisions on who is accepted in the program, but they are looked at, they are, they have a waitlist, and they're all looked at in order. It's not like they just go and select some and ignore others. And Connections does this with all of the people who come into its services. They assess them for what programs they are the best fit for them, and, you know, some families would not be, who may have children in the school districts, wouldn't fit the other profiles that are needed to be in this particular program, and might be directed to a different type of program. Some might have lesser financial needs and be closer to stability, and they might get prevention funding, or they might get ESG, which is Emergency Solutions Grant Funding, which is a shorter subsidy generally. Or they might be prioritized for permanent supportive housing.
Okay, so I'm going to support this because I do care about the homeless. I also do care about us making sure that our funding is maximized to the best of its ability and that we are not putting additional barriers on people that we don't need to.
Well, I can get you more information about those specific questions you asked, and I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you, Sarah, thank you, Alderman. Seeing no more lights, this has been moved and seconded. City Clerk, could you please take the roll, and this is on P1, Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program Report.
Yes. Alderman Brathwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Aye.
Alderman Sufferton.
Aye.
Alderman Revelle.
Aye.
Alderman Rainey.
Aye.
Alderman Fleming.
Aye.
And Alderman Fisk.
All right, P1 passes on a nine to zero vote, the Evanston City Council. All right, we're now going to move to Call the Wards. Alderman Brathwaite.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just reminding the second ward regents, we're over our summer break and looking forward to our September Ward Meeting next Thursday, regular time, regular place, District 65 Building. We'll have an update on our capital projects this season, update on Harbert Park renovations, and also an update, in June, we had a community meeting to talk about the future of Curves Cafe, and we're very close to having an owner-operator to replace that business, so looking forward to seeing you all next Thursday. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman Nguyen.
No report.
Alderman Wilson.
No.
Alderman Ru Simmons.
Thank you, we have a ward meeting this week, Wednesday, 7:00 p.m., G300. I want to congratulate and celebrate Ebenezer African Methodist Episcopal Church on 137 years of service. The church is historic, and it is currently led by Pastor Deborah Scott. They do amazing work in town for families in need, and they have done for many years, so congratulations to Ebenezer, the entire Ebenezer family, and thank you for your service. Additionally, the community is invited to rally off and send off the 100 residents that will be going on a trip to Alabama. So 100 Evanston residents who are braving a long bus ride and powerful visit to the Legacy Museum from enslavement to mass incarceration, and the National Memorial for Peace and Justice in Montgomery, Alabama, will meet each other and prepare for their journey next Friday. Two buses will carry 55 black Evanstonians, 40 white, and five folks who are people of color. Their ages range from 19 to 79, and they're 86 women and 14 men. So congratulations to Nina Caven and Kimberly Holmes-Ross for convening this group and your efforts. Lastly, I would like to make a referral to the Preservation Commission. This is to work on what has been known as a pitch proposal. So it is a proposal that is a cultural landmarking of the West End of the Fifth Ward, honoring some businesses and other historically significant sites, so I would like to refer that to the Preservation Commission for some actions and a path forward. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman. Alderman Sufferton. Alderman Revelle. Alderman Rainey.
Yes, I want to remind people in the area of Howard Street, especially the Dobson and Brummel people, between Ridge and Asbury, that there is a zoning change being proposed at the Plan Commission this Wednesday night. Don't forget to be there, 7:30. Also, I made a referral a while back regarding condominium deconversions. Condominium deconversions that take a condominium building and return them to rental housing are included in our Inclusionary Zoning Ordinance, which means when you make more rental housing, that rental housing is subject to the, just as though you were building a condominium, you're being made to pay percentage of, you know, you're either in lieu of paying the price per unit, or you have to pay the price per unit, and you're making more rental housing. I've asked that that be considered to be removed from the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. I have several developers interested in deconverting buildings in my ward who are asking for relief. So could, I don't know where to send this, PND, Administration Public Works, someplace. Please help me.
PND, all right, so we'll send that, we'll send that to PND.
Thank you.
Can City Manager clarify, are we having a City Council meeting on the 16th?
Yes.
Okay, okay, no problem. He said 28th, or whatever, okay. So I have two things, two announcements. We are not the school board, but the school board is looking for a new superintendent, and so you pay taxes over there, so please pay attention. They're having a community meeting on the 12th at 7 o'clock, I believe, over at King Lab, for you all to give input on the new superintendent over there, so please pay attention and participate. That is on Thursday. I will be having a ward meeting, but that's still the 18th, and I want to make a referral. So at our last APNW meeting, we talked about boards and commissions. I'd like to make a referral to rules. I'd like to have a list of boards and commissions that will allow you to sit on them if you are not an Evanston resident. So I know some you can sit on if you're just an Evanston business owner, so I would like to have clarity on which ones those are. And I'd also like to have a discussion or get some clarity as to what boards and commissions are recorded and which ones are not recorded. I know some are videotaped and some aren't, and there's been some resident question as to how that's decided, so I think we should formalize whatever that process is. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman. Alderman and Fisk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take this opportunity to thank Wally Bobkowitz for coming to his last first ward meeting. Yikes.
Thank you for the cake.
We had a cake and coffee and cookies, and everyone clapped, and everyone was sad to see Wally go. So thank you for all of that, and thanks to the rest of the staff who came along as well. So, Wally, you will be missed by the first ward, and as you make your way through the other ward meetings, I'm sure that the response will be similar.
As the City Manager just articulated, I want people to know there is a City Council meeting on next Monday, September 16th. Items on that agenda include cannabis, city facility needs assessments, and Crown, sort of an update on Crown. Yes, yes, Alderman Fisk?
I'm sorry, can I just add one thing to my, I've been really concerned about reading the New York Times about vaping and vaping, the cannabis oil, or whatever that is. I'd like our health department to take a look at that and give us a recommendation. I mean, it seems that there's a problem somewhere, and we need to figure it out.
Absolutely, and so, and just so folks in the public know and everything, the discussion about cannabis is the initial discussion about cannabis on Monday. It's not, you know, a decision-making meeting. I don't believe, City Manager, it is the beginning of that conversation. Alderman Brathwaite.
Really brief, and I should have mentioned this during Call the Wards, last, this month, we had our summer youth and employment, just the whole wrap-up of the summer youth, and the mayor was out of town. Their notes are going to be coming forward, but I just want to acknowledge our staff, Director Lawrence Hemingway, Kevin Brown, his staff, there have been just record number with our summer youth employment jobs, we see an expansion.
but they are looked at, they are, they have a waitlist, and they're all looked at in order. It's not like they just go and select some and ignore others. And Connections does this with all of the people who come into its services. They assess them for what programs they are the best fit for them. And, you know, some families would not be, who may have children in the school districts, wouldn't fit the other profiles that are needed to be in this particular program and might be directed to a different type of program. Some might have lesser financial needs and be closer to stability, and they might get prevention funding, or they might get ESG, which is emergency solutions grant funding, which is a shorter subsidy generally.
Okay.
Or they might be prioritized for permanent support of housing.
Okay. So I'm going to support this because I do care about the homeless.